I'm not gonna touch it.
A meeting of the Gardner City Council, January 22, 2019, to order. Um, Mr. Ford will call the roll.
Counselor Boone.
Present.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ronald Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Gravel.
Present.
Counselor Hardern.
Present.
Counselor Christine Johnson.
Present.
Counselor James Johnson.
Present.
Counselor Kaczynski.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Present.
President Graves.
President, please rise for the opening prayer and be called about the Pledge of Allegiance. Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us to worthy deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of the good city government. We pray thee, bless, protect all the people of our city, so that thou, the sole God, inspire us, that we may be the great unity and harmony in heaven. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is anybody recording tonight's meeting? Reading of the minutes of prior meetings, reading and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 7, 2019. Counselor Cormier.
Mr. President, make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as printed.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor James Johnson, to accept the minutes as printed and to waive the reading of the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, appointments. Number 10043, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Priya Gandabear to the position of Assistant City Solicitor for a term expiring January 3, 2020. Report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee is favorable on this, reported favorably on this, and I move the confirmation of the appointment.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to confirm the mayor's appointment of Priya Gandabear to the position of Assistant City Solicitor for a term expiring January 3, 2020. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh.
I just want to point out, I don't think there's been any discussion on it. The attorney's been on the job for a little while now. I've had the occasion to deal with her and communicate and read some of the work that she's done on behalf of the city, and it's most impressive. And I think we're happy to, we should be pleased to have her with us, working on behalf of the city on legal matters. So, I'm supportive of the motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnson.
Just a question to the chair, through Mr. President. My question here is, is there a need to have an Assistant City Solicitor in the office? I guess is my big question.
If the Finance Committee, any members of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee reported favorably on it, therefore, with the assumption and our recommendation that it is, is in fact needed.
Thank you, Counselor.
If I may, just for a second time, in response to the Counselor's question, we've had Assistant City Solicitor in the city for a lengthy period. I think early on in my tenure, maybe in the mid-eighties is when we started it, and I think the need for it is greater than ever, as a matter of fact. So, I think my response would be in the affirmative, yes, we do.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is number 10044, notice of appointment of John Flick to the position of City Solicitor for a term expiring January 3, 2020. Report from the Finance Committee.
Since confirmation is not required, the Finance Committee recommends that the item be placed on file, and I so move.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to place the mayor's appointment of John Flick to position of City Solicitor for a term expiring January 3, 2020, on file. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a clarification, that there are only two positions, I believe, in the entire city that don't require confirmation, that is, this one, the position of City Solicitor, and the following one, which will be the mayor's executive secretary.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh.
Just to follow up on that, if I may, the charter provides that the City Solicitor's appointed by the mayor solely, and the next one is not a department head, and it's not provided by the charter, the mayor's secretary be not covered, but it's not a department head either, and we don't approve anybody else's secretary's item. It's just another category. The mayor was kind enough to send us notice of her appointment, so it's held.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, number 10046, uh, 10045, a notice of appointment of Rachel Stefano to the position of Executive Secretary for a term expiring January 3, 2020. Report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee again makes a motion that this be placed on file.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to place the notice of the appointment of Rachel Stefano to the position of Executive Secretary for a term expiring January 3, 2020, on file. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 10046, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of James F. Trofaro Jr. to the position of Deputy Chief of Police for a term expiring January 20, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee interviewed the individuals, spoke with the police chief and the mayor with their recommendations. We were very satisfied with, and you all have copies of his resume, of his experience, background, and his qualifications, and it was a unanimous decision to recommend confirmation of this individual. So I therefore make a motion that we confirm this appointment.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to confirm the mayor's appointment of James F. Trofaro Jr. to the position of Deputy Chief of Police for a term expiring January 20, 2022. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Gravel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we're, the city is in a great position where we have gentlemen coming up through the ranks in the regard to GPE, and Mr. Trofaro has, I've known him quite a long time, along with Chief Bragg. I'm just so happy that we can promote from within, because what it shows is that we have police officers and firefighters and other first responders in the city that are dedicated to this city and put themselves out there to do the job that's really tough, and a lot of people can't do these jobs. So, I admire this gentleman for stepping up, not only that, but he serves in the, he did serve in the Coast Guard, I'm not sure if he's still doing that, but his dedication to this area has been long-term. So, I am over the top in favor of this appointment, so I wish him nothing but the best. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we're gonna take a short recess after this appointment. 10047, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Lauren A. Walter to the position of Police Sergeant Permanent. Report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met with the individuals, met with the chief, the mayor, reviewed his qualifications. He is certified by the Civil Service Commission also to hold his position, and it was unanimously our pleasure to move his confirmation.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to confirm the mayor's appointment of Lauren A. Walter to the position of Police Sergeant Permanent. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll take a short recess, so that the officers can be sworn in. Approving an exemption under General Arts, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, financial interests of Kyle Long, contract for school department coaching services. Report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee is favorable. This individual holds a part-time summer position, therefore needs the exemption in order to do the part-time coaching position. So, in favor of this, and I move the approval.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to approve the exemption for Kyle Long, item number 10048. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, number 10049, a resolution relative to the fiscal year 2019, Community Development Block Grant Mini Entitlement Plan. Report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee is favorable. The president sat in on the review of this plan initially, and we went over all of these with the Assistant Director. I'm quite satisfied with that, therefore I make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to adopt the resolution as printed, relative to the fiscal year 2019, Community Development Block Grant Mini Entitlement Plan. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 10050, a measure to grant an easement to Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Incorporated for transmission purposes for land off Pearl Street Stump Pond. Report from the Finance Committee.
Uh, this is an easement for these two utilities. It's an aerial easement to allow them to work on the poles and transmission lines thereof. We were in favor of this, we went over it, and I recommend granting the easement.
Second the motion.
There's a motion.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to grant the easement to Mass Electric Company and Verizon New England Incorporated for transmission purposes for land off Pearl Street Stump Pond. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 10051, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600 thereof, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 5 Parking Meters.
Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Boone.
Leading up to a motion, I found it odd, an entire section of the city's parking could be changed, affecting numerous people and businesses, but the council as a whole has no say. I agree, we could continue our past practice of referring to one or more subcommittees for study and report, but I feel that this, in my opinion, should be voted on by a council as a whole. Therefore, I make a motion that we send the ordinance to first printing as amended. Thank you, Mr. President.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Boone, seconded by Counselor Johnson, to send the item number 10051, An Ordinance to Amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600 thereof, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 5 Parking Meters, to first printing. Did you say as amended?
As amended, which is striking Public Service Committee.
Public Safety.
Public Safety.
That is the amendment, isn't it? Yes. Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, point of order.
Just point of order, I just, the ordinance is presented as an ordinance amending the ordinance, which is, but as amended would suggest that there's been some further change.
That's why I.
I just wanna make sure I understand.
As written.
As written.
So, let me repeat that then. Just for clarification purposes, Counselor Boone, there is no amendment to it, it's as written?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion is made by Counselor Boone, seconded by Counselor James Johnson, to send an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600 thereof, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Articles 5, Article 5 Parking Meters, to first printing. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Johnson.
The Safety Committee has already met on this, and we did vote on it, and it was two to one against.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boudreaux.
I too have always found it a little odd that a committee could make such a substantial change, but I also am not for changing large substantive policy without a meeting of the committee of the whole, so I guess that would be my suggestion, but I can't, I can't make a motion under a motion, can I?
Sure.
Motion to refer.
I motion to refer this to the committee of the whole.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Boudreaux, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to refer the item number 10051 to the city council as a committee of the whole. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Christine Johnson.
I'm not in favor of referring this to committee as a whole, because the change, from what I see, is just, as in anything else, it would be referred to the committee to study and report, and then the full council would vote on the change for the parking meters, if I understand it correctly, and I think I do. So, I'm not in favor of referring it to a committee of the whole, I think I have enough information to vote on it tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boudreaux.
I don't believe that the case. Can't the Public Service Committee change certain, remember, former Counselor Stisone was telling me about this. The Public Service Committee can change certain things that have to do with the parking meters without it ever, I mean, public safety, without it ever returning back to the city council for any sort of secondary vote.
Counselor Johnson.
Well, just in answering that question, that is correct. Currently, right now, changes to the parking meters is at the safety subcommittee level, and that's what this change, or this is intended to do, is remove that from the Safety Committee and bring it to the whole council.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gravel, did you have your hand up?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention that, you know, we have subcommittees for a reason. It's to deal with the small minutia stuff that, that the council, if we held a council at a whole meeting for everything that we dealt with under the budgetary issues of the City of Gardner, we would be here 365 days a year, 24/7, in order to deal with every little topic. So, I got a lot of faith in our subcommittees to do their job, it's just like that this council relies on the department heads in the City of Gardner, that work for the City of Gardner, to report to their subcommittees and give us a report on how their budgetary issues are, or how they're operating. So, for the Safety Committee to be able to just, in no short terms, say, you know, what we're doing with the parking meters? I'm not in favor of parking meters, but it's one of those things that's already here. So, I guess my point is this, I don't think that I'm in favor of this at this point, only because we already discussed it in the, in the Safety Committee, that it would be redundant to, to hold the council as a whole when the Safety Committee makes these decisions. We already report back to the council when we have our regular meetings anyways, on what we're doing. I'm not sure what the initiative is, or what, what else we can do with it. I mean, I'm under the assumption that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Just to clarify, the motion on the table is the motion to refer to the council as the whole, just so, just so we don't get ahead of ourselves. Counselor Walsh.
I think Counselor Cormier.
Counselor Cormier.
Well, I certainly will support the motion to refer, because some of the other things that might have to be considered when reviewing this, before making any decision, is when we put in traffic parking meters years ago, you didn't have a traffic commission, and in reality, some of the effects of parking spaces affects traffic probably more than anything else, and we're not even including them in a conversation. The parking meters themselves, the revenue and the meters themselves fall under the purview of the Treasury, which is under the Finance Committee. So, I think before we go and eliminate anything, maybe that should be looked at in the mix also, so I'd certainly, before discussing anything else, I think I would support the motion to refer the council as a whole.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Walsh.
I'm gonna support the motion to refer, just because if the council as a group feels that it's worthy of further input, further from other sources, such as Counselor Cormier suggests, then that's a worthy enterprise. I would invite, on the merits of it, though, before voting on the referral, the proponent of the ordinance amendment, Counselor Boone, to suggest, or to indicate whether there's been some problem with the administration of the, of the parking meter locations that prompted the need, in his mind, for this change.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone, if, I would give you the floor if you wanted to respond to that, 'cause I know Counselor Boudreaux had his hand up. Thank you.
Counselor Cormier brought up a point that, you know, sometimes these parking meters are part of finance, and sometimes they're part of public safety, sometimes they're part of public welfare, businesses, and people. That's why I would argue the point that, I haven't seen any problems with particular parking locations, but I'd argue the point that we should be voting on it as a whole, not as a subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone.
It's a drastic leap, but I like a good drastic leap. Now, this is opening the door to kind of trashing the whole subcommittee system, because I know in the committee in which I chair, the Public Service Committee, we have water and sewer abatements. Sometimes those are as hefty as, like, what was that one we saw with the?
Several thousand.
Several, tens of thousands of dollars. Now, that is a large financial burden. So, if the parking meters can't be decided at the committee level, then why can such things that affect our community financially as a sewer abatement be considered at the water level? And I don't know which way I'm going on this, I could go either way, so that's kinda why I'm worrying like that, but that's, there's some food for thought.
Thank you, Counselor. And again, the motion is to refer to the city council as a committee of the whole. Counselor, anybody else? Discussion on it? Counselor Hardern?
Yes, I am on the Safety Committee, and at the meeting, I was one that voted no. I have the same logic that Counselor Boudreaux was stating, that, you know, there are other subcommittees that decide certain things that the whole council does not. I think you're delving into, you're diving into something, and it works, it seems to work. So, right now, I'm saying, I would have to say I do not support this, but maybe we'll hear some more here.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on the referral motion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Can we have no's, hands?
Four.
Counselor Boone, Counselor Christine Johnson, Counselor James Johnson, Counselor Hardern. That's four, right? Four no's?
Seven, eight, all the rest of the eight, okay.
That passes, so that's referred to the city council as a committee of the whole. Next item on the agenda, number 10007, under reports of standard committees, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 156 thereof, entitled Municipal Grounds Commission to Add Provisions Relating to a Community Bandstand Committee, which is in Public Service Committee. Report from the Service Committee. Counselor Boudreaux.
So, this, over the last couple months, got kind of odd, in terms of what was falling where, and what existed, and what didn't exist, and who was being paid for their position doing what. And with the Municipal Grounds Commission claiming that they are not the Municipal Grounds Commission, and for people that kinda want more of a in-depth view of what we discussed at our Public Service Commission Committee meeting, there was a good article written yesterday or the day before in the Gardner News, but in that, the three members of the Public Service Commission Committee did decide to not report 10007 out favorably, however we do favorably report 10008 out. Because we are under the belief that the issues involving the Municipal Grounds Commission need to be figured out before we can place a subset of the Municipal Grounds Commission under them. But 10008 will allow the Bandstand Committee, in its current fashion, to continue raising funds and moving towards a fabulous summer in downtown Gardner.
Okay, so, the item that we're addressing right this moment is 10007, and the report from the Service Committee is that the committee was not favorable for it, and therefore there's no motion being made?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counselor Walsh.
I believe that there has to be some formality to this organization in order to be protective from its use, from its use, from the use of the land, the acceptance of funds, I think it kinda goes hand in hand with 10008, as the council suggested. And since that is also with the Finance Committee, and I think that it would be worthwhile to try to get to the bottom of, of the organizational aspects of the proposed ordinance, and whether that may need to be changed in some way, in a separate, a separate group, formalized by ordinance or otherwise. So, with that in mind, I'm gonna move that the item, that 10007, 10007, be referred to the Finance Committee for study.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Cormier, to refer number 1007 to the Finance Committee for study and report. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Gravel.
I just threw the chair to the Finance Committee, I just wanted to bring attention to a letter that was hand-delivered to the city council by the Law Department on June 12. This is when the city solicitor got involved in trying to get this done. First, I wanna just commend the council president and the city clerk for doing their due diligence and getting this put forth in front of the city council, and the Finance Committee for doing their due diligence in trying to help establish this city ordinance. There seems to be a lot of confusion on this. I actually talked to the mayor today, and he gave me the impression that Municipal Grounds Commission was never deleted by city ordinance or by. ordinance or by city charter, in actuality, the Municipal Grounds Commission needs to be in effect, because we have a Cemetery Commission. Now, the Cemetery Commission doesn't get paid, from what I'm, this is coming from the mayor, the Cemetery Commission doesn't get paid, but Municipal Ground Commission do. And the three members that are currently serving on the Cemetery Commission, I believe, are still receiving a stipend from Municipal Grounds. So they cover both of those, so that's why I don't understand the confusion. I'm glad that the Counselor has decided to help out with this on the Finance Committee, I truly appreciate it, this is a great program, you know, Ed Lukowski ran this program for a number of years, I've run it for the last, I don't know, seven or eight years since I've been involved. We built this community bandstand, all volunteer group, by the way, from six shows a year to sometimes fourteen, and we don't do it with any taxpayer's dollars, I just think that is such a great committee, and I'm not taking anything away from service, I think they did their due diligence, don't get me wrong. I just don't want this to drag out much longer, only because I got, we got to get things done on the bandstand to set up for this year. I think that, right now, I'm kind of in a hurry-up mood, because I got to start contacting people I should have been contacting three months ago. So I'm just hoping that we can move forward in a stepped-up pace a little bit, and just get this worked out, I appreciate it, and I appreciate this Council for all their support for this community program. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Boudreaux.
No one is doubting the greatness of the bandstand program, it's where I get my yearly dose of polka, and I think it's great, but when you have two of the three members of said commission coming to your committee and saying, "We're not the commission, we don't want the duty," it's hard to say, "Nah, you're the commission, and here's the duty." So that's basically what we were saying, not that we are against the committee in any way, shape, or form, just that the way it is currently structured, and we're attempting to structure it, may, at the very least, need revamping, because at the very least, two of the three members of the commission are saying that they're, one, not on the commission, and don't know what happened to the commission, they haven't had a meeting in six-plus years. So, that's all for now.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Gravel?
If I could, just one more time, Mr. President, I just want to make sure that the Service Committee knows that I'm not coming down on them for not doing anything, they've actually done a lot of work on this, so, and I know that they appreciate this program, I just want to move it forward and get it accomplished, so that we can have another great concert series during 2019. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Boom?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a point of clarification for the committee, we did come to an understanding that the donations and funds are being deposited into a separate account by the DPW, so it's being accounted for for funds coming in and funds going out, and the Finance Committee could certainly follow up on that aspect and come to a better understanding of it, and then we can figure out this Municipal Grounds Commission being eliminated when we still have an ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and for clarification purposes, I will add a couple of things. For clarification, I'm not debating, we've been aware all along that the money has been deposited into the DPW's fund, but it needs its own airmark fund, that's one of the reasons why we're doing this. Secondly, the executive is the body of government in the city that appoints the members of commissions, they're not elected, and they're not appointees for life, so if for some reason somebody doesn't want to be on the commission, they don't need to be. Any further discussion on the motion to refer to the Finance Committee for studying report? All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, number one zero 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 eight, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by the Community Bandstand Committee for musical concerts and other entertainment events. This was both in the Finance Committee and Service, and Counsel Boudreaux has given information, unless you have more to give, on one zero 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 eight.
A motion, we send this to the Finance Committee for studying report?
Already did. I move that it be discharged from the Public Service Committee and remain with the Finance Committee.
Okay, so the motion is by Counsel Walsh to discharge it from the Public Service Committee, seconded by Counsel Correa. Any discussion on that motion? Yes, Counsel Boudreaux.
You can't help but feel that we're kind of being punished for doing our, for doing our due diligence, but that's neither here nor there.
Well, your motion has subsumed into a discharge from your committee, so it's going to be right where you wanted it to go, right, Finance Committee. Counsel Correa?
To make you feel better, it all started with the Finance Committee, we shipped it over to you.
Good point, well taken.
Don't feel bad.
Any further discussion on the motion to discharge the item from the Service Committee and to keep it on the Finance Committee's agenda? All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Appreciate a motion to go into new business, actually made by Counsel Gravel, seconded by Counsel Boudreaux, as opposed to new business, any discussion on the motion, there being none, all in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? Counsel Correa?
I would just like to congratulate, and wish the best of luck for our new Deputy Chief and Sergeant.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Boom?
Nothing further, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boudreaux?
I would like to thank and commend the Gardner Fire Department for their work battling and putting out a three-alarm fire on Greenwood Street this morning, everyone came together, they worked great, people were helping their neighbors as they should, so thank you, bravo, gentlemen and ladies. Also, I would like to congratulate Mayor Mark Hogg for a successful term as the President of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, it is something that doesn't normally happen amongst a sitting administrator or mayor in a community, and we were truly blessed and grateful to have it happen here, that gave Gardner a much larger seat at the table, with the MMA and the state municipal government leaders from all over, and congratulations, sir, that is all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the last couple of snowstorms, when there has been a snowban, parking ban in place, it amazes me to hear the police officers calling for information for the people who might have left their cars on the road. So this morning was no different, I mean, the parking ban was in effect until seven this morning, and they were trying to find the people to get their cars moved, so that the DPW could do their job and plow the public parking lot and some of the public roads that hadn't been. So all I can do is plead to the people out there in Gardner, if you are not sure when there is a parking ban, there is an avenue, you can sign up for tax, go on to the Gardner website, sign up for code RED, you will put, you can put your mobile phone in there, you can put your home telephone number in there, you can even put your email address in there. There's three different spots, you can get notified that there is a parking ban for any given night, so please, don't make our officers work any harder than they already are, they are trying to do their due diligence by getting your car off the road, so it doesn't cost you any money, so let's give it our all to make sure that this new way of notifying the public for parking bans is successful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Kozinski?
I have nothing this evening, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Gravel?
Well, happy new year to everybody on the Council, I know we said it at the end of the year, but happy new year. I'm just so happy tonight that, this is like the second meeting in a row, that we've been able to promote a lot of people from within, in our city government, first responders, just different departments, the people are moving up the ladder and doing a great job, these are long-term people that work for the city, they give everything they got to the city in service. We need to make sure that we respect that, and I, for one, certainly do. With all the lot of these people, a lot of these little jobs that you don't see get done, don't get done without these people. And I'm referring to just one person in particular, Ms. Stefano, who works in the mayor's office. She does a tremendous lot in this city, she takes care of a lot of the websites, she takes care of the Facebook page, she does a lot of other things that, you know, just because it says Executive Secretary, doesn't mean that she's not, she doesn't have ten other priorities to do in that office, and I just commend these people for moving up by means. Jimmy Trefiro, new Deputy Chief, great man, serves his country, now he's served in the City of Gardner, long-term, I've known Jimmy a long time, I think that it's just great, you know, that I see two friends of mine move up in the Gardner PD, and I see other things happening over there, that a lot of other patrolmen are moving up the ranks, and I like to see that, I like promoting from within, that just means we're keeping experience in the city, and I truly appreciate that. Again, I just want to mention real quick, again, I know that Counsel Boudreaux feels bad that he's getting punished, but he's not getting punished, I think that we just need to get the bandstand thing going, I truly appreciate all his efforts and his committee's efforts to help get this going. It's a change, but it's going to be a good change, it's going to protect the volunteers that are on that committee, and it kind of streamlines it, so I'm hoping that the Finance Committee can help me out with that, and going forward. I just want to mention also that, you know, from a public safety point, you know, the last two nights have been really cold, if you got animals, you got cats, you got dogs, don't, you know, don't leave them outside, bring them in, you know, they're family, too. I got three cats, so I know what it's like, you can't leave them outside, you know, you're just endangering them. Check on your neighbors and your friends, and just make sure that they're safe, you know, it's cold, it's, I'm going to say it, you got to check on your seniors also, you know, you got to do that, you know, because, you know, a lot of our seniors, you know, they live by themselves, so we got to make sure that they're safe, so please, just check on your friends and your neighbors, and, you know, during the winter months here, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Johnson?
Nothing further to make, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Harder?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to talk about a new business that is here in the City of Gardner, Sanctuary, which is down next to Friendly's. I'm sure there's a lot of pros and cons about this, but I was lucky enough to be invited to take a tour of it by someone that is, works there, and to let all the other Counselors know, they are welcomed to go as well, I believe our Counselor Boudrea and Counselor Kozinski have already been through as well. Their security there is phenomenal. The gentleman that does the security sits at a desk, and he can focus those cameras across the street and look inside the gas stations. So I would suggest that, I would suggest that you all go, see what you think of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President, as you all know, I wasn't able to be present at the last meeting, I was able to participate in the formal meeting by a phone, but I do know that there was a presentation made by the School Building Committee, and some of the other people involved with the plans that are being made for an elementary school, a new elementary school, and the proposal that they've made, the recommendations that they've made, and I've read the materials that were presented in the PowerPoint slides that were, and read the stories that were written about it, and it all seems interesting and well-thought-out, as far as the location and the structure and the plans that have been prepared so far. What I saw on the timeline was an October 2019 termination about the city's input for funding its portion, which as I understand it, is between somewhere, somewhere between thirty-five and forty million dollars, that is not subject to reimbursement. What I haven't heard is how the committee, or the mayor, or the school committee proposes that the city's share of that be funded, what the sources of funding would be, whether it be from borrowing, as we did with middle school, after an override was defeated to fund that, or whether it's a proposal for all or a portion of it to be funded through another proposed override. We have recent experience on the success, or the likely success, of that approach. So I'm anxious to hear from the mayor, how he and the committee intend to fund a huge project in terms of dollars and cents for the city's share, and I hope to hear from it soon, especially if we're looking at October for a decision to be made on that topic. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Correa?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have one announcement, I think we all got the invitation to the open house for former Police Chief Neil Erickson.
This is just, where's our former Municipal Counsel?
The RSVP goes to Lori Lyons, and, did everybody get this?
Yes.
So that's going to be February tenth, 2019, from one PM to five PM, we're lucky to have Chief Erickson around, I don't think you see it too often, I don't remember it happening, the way you get a new Deputy Chief and a new Chief within weeks of each other, and so it's nice to have Chief Erickson around, being a wealth of knowledge, he was, you see the picture of him there, he looks like he was twelve years old there, but he's a wealth of knowledge that they can call upon, or they can call upon if they ever need any guidance or historical information or anything like that, so anyways, that's going to be held on February tenth, from one to five, and again, the RSVP will go to Lori Lyons, and we have her email address there. Without further ado, I'll have to say in a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Counsel Gravel, seconded by Counsel James Johnson, all in favor to adjourn? All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
O my God, the process is so rough. As we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation and action witnessed during the course of this meeting. Blessed, oh Lord, all who are gathered here, in the people whose representatives we are, in the vow of tenure of our common welfare. Until our next meeting.
Amen.